All right, thank you very much, Legal Counsel. At this point, I'll go ahead and move for German of the study session. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Cruz Baca. Any objections? No, so move. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the invocation. We'll have Dr. Flores come up. Professor at Azusa Pacific University and also the Church of the Redeemer here in the city of Baldwin Park and also product of Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's all stand and I want to thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve here in the city of Baldwin Park. I want to thank Mayor and all the council and staff. Let's pray. Gracious God, we are thankful today, Lord, for United States of America, the land of the free and the home of the brave. Thank you for our city of Baldwin Park, Lord, and those that serve and live within the city limits, Lord. We come before you, Lord, in a time of tragedy and devastation with loss of lives and fire destruction. And yet, at the same time, in honor of veterans, Lord, who have served our country and have served from this city, we're mindful, Lord, that life is precious and life matters. And yet, you've put us in place, Lord, as government and as leaders, Lord, to help, support, and serve the people of which you have given to this community. We pray, Lord, for healing, Lord, where healing is necessary for those who mourn, Lord, that you might bring peace to hearts, Lord, for those who are experiencing loss of property today, Lord, may they find hope and faith, Lord, to move forward. Lord, we pray, Father, even post-election, Lord, for our country and our city and our state, Lord. Help us, Lord, to acknowledge your presence and commit our service to you and somehow allow you to work your will out. We pray, Lord, for today's meeting and agenda, Lord. We just commit this to you, Lord, just allow us to use wisdom, respect, Lord, that we may ultimately bring dignity and value to all the citizens of Baldwin Park. We commit this to you in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. At this point, we'll face a flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, and good evening to everyone that's here today. Councilmembers wishing to close on anyone's behalf?
Yes.
Yes.
On behalf of my uncle Ralph Contreras that passed away a week and a half ago.
Wow.
He was my mom's second brother.
Wow.
And he had been sick for a while and passed away from complications from pancreatic cancer.
Our condolences goes out to your relative. Councilmembers?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank the staff for a great job they did for the parade. And I thought it was just a wonderful job, all of you guys, staff, police department, Public Works, Parks and Rec, all of you working together with the school district. And I just wanted to commend you guys for a job well done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I also want to thank the city for allowing the women's club to use the new trolley. They really loved it and looking forward to next year if they can ride in it again. It was very nice because the ladies, as we're getting older, it's hard to climb up onto that flatbed. This way, they were just in there with an air conditioner and the window was open and they loved it. So, thank you so very much to the city of Baldwin Park for allowing the Baldwin Park Women's Club to use the trolley.
All right, thank you very much. Also, I want to close on behalf of Southwest Voters Registration Education Project, which is also part of the Wilm C. Velazquez. We had Antonio, how can I forget Antonio? Antonio, thank you very much. Antonio Gonzalez has passed away this past week, a prominent Latino who also, we had an opportunity to work with him in Baldwin Park in registering a lot of individuals, made an impact throughout the country. So, our deepest condolences goes out to his family already. Okay, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and take roll call. We'll have our City Treasurer, Maria Contreras. Oh, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Buenos dias to todos and welcome. Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia. Councilmember Susan Rubio. Mayor Pretend, Ricardo Pacheco.
President.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
President, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Susan Rubio and Councilmember Monica Garcia. That is my motion.
Second.
Second. Any objections? No, so move. All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we have several presentations and we'll go ahead and go with the first ones that we have here. Here we go. All right, the first one we have, the city. So, the first one that we have is our new city engineer, engineering manager, John Bussay. Go ahead and, is he present? Oh, John, okay, thank you, sir. John graduated from Cal Poly Pomona with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and from Cal State Fullerton. That's where I graduated, back in the eighties. Okay. With a master's degree in civil engineering, construction management. In 2005, he began his career in the city of West Covina as a part-time engineering intern and was hired full-time as an engineering technician in the Public Works Department at the city of West Covina. John then joined the Public Works Department in the city of Diamond Bar and associate engineer in 2014. John has performed and coordinated detailed designs for high-profile and multi-public works projects within the San Gabriel Valley region. Examples include management of capital improvement programs and implementing projects such as Grand Avenue beautification project, road enhancement projects, street rehabilitation projects, city entry monument signs projects, park trails projects, and complete street projects. In addition, John has been overseeing land development projects, stormwater compliance tasks, and traffic maintenance and management systems projects. Throughout his career, John has proved to be an efficient and hard-working public servant with a goal to serve the community's needs and above all else. So, I want to thank you very much and welcome to the family. Thank you, sir. The next one that we have is from building officials, Mr. Long Tang. Am I pronouncing that correct? All righty, come up to the lectern. Thank you. Long comes from us, from the city of West Covina where he served as a building official for the past 10 years. He brings with him over 20 years of experience in the building code, structural design, and ADA. Prior to coming to West Covina, he served as a senior plan check engineer for the city of Pasadena and Willdam Associates where he was instrumental in development of numerous large retail mixed-use educational and custom residential projects. Under his supervision, West Covina Building Division was essential in the efficient and cost-effective development and redevelopment of the city's West Covina Plaza Mall, Eastland Center Shopping Center, Azusa Heights Shopping Center, office buildings, hotels, dining establishments, multifamily residential and single-family residential tract developments. His direct involvement helped secure the city's most business-friendly city award from the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation in 2012. With his expertise and many years of experience in the industry, he is able to assist homeowners and developers realize their projects in the most cost-effective and timely manner. His involvement has brought him and his division many letters of appreciation from residents, designers, and developers over the years. So, thank you very much, Mr. Long. Mr. Tang, thank you very much for being here. All right, so let's get to work, gentlemen. Okay. All right, so then we have another presentation that we have here. So, let me see where we have this up here. So, all right, so at this point, I'd ask Mr. Chief Jim Enriquez, you could step up here to lectern, sir. Chief, appreciate that. They'll read this very impressive detailed information regarding him, who's obviously a family of the city of Baldwin Park. And thank you. This is, Jim Enrique has served in the fire service for over 34 years. Chief Enrique grew up in the city of Baldwin Park and graduated from Baldwin Park High School. What year? Chief, what year did you graduate? You didn't want to put that in there.
1978, oh seventeen.
1978? Whoa, nineteen seventy. Oh, okay, all righty, sounds good. Okay. After graduating from Baldwin Park High School, at the age of 17, he joined the United States Army. After completing boot camp, Chief Enriquez received specialized training as a medical specialist medic. After serving three years in the United States Army, he received an honorable discharge. Upon returning back home, he pursued the goal of becoming a firefighter. In 1984, he was hired by the Pasadena Fire Department. He served two years when the Los Angeles County Fire Department called in January of 1986. During 31 years of advancing through ranks, Chief Enrique worked at many active fire stations, including Fire Station 29 and specialized assignments in the position of paramedic, fire inspector, engineer, fire captain, and battalion chief. His most notable assignment includes serving three years of the county of Los Angeles, chief administrative office, office of emergency management, and working as a fire chief Freeman adjunct. Chief Enrique oversees the fire department's day-to-day operation and serves the following communities: Azusa, Baldwin Park, Badbury, Claremont, Covina, Dordi, Glendora, Irwindale, and San Dimas. Chief Enrique is a governing board member of the San Dimas Community Hospital and governing board member for Glendora Community Hospital. Additionally, Chief Enrique collaborates with all city managers, elected officials, and community stakeholders to ensure local emergency preparedness efforts. Chief Enrique's additional responsibilities include a team leader of the Los Angeles County Emergency Operations Center and operations section chief as the incident management team. Chief Enrique is certified in the state of California as incident commander, operations section chief, plan section chief, strike team leader, emergency operations center specialized, specialized, and holds master's degree in emergency service administration from California State University, Long Beach. Chief Enrique is married 29 years to his beautiful wife, Teresa, and together, they have two wonderful sons, Jack and Jeff. Chief Enrique has served the city of Baldwin Park as an assistant fire chief for four years. Chief Enrique is honored and privileged to have served the community of Baldwin Park, his hometown where he started. So, thank you on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park. Chief, come on up here and then we'll let you say some words from up here. We're going to present you with a plaque. Is your family here?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up here, gentlemen. Come on up here. Ayala, is your camera better than mine?
I've never seen any of that.
Okay. Olivia, hello? Yes, 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 I'll do that. I'm in the meeting, okay, I will. I'll call you after. Bye-bye, bye-bye. All right. Manny, hold on real quick.
Thank you so much. Jean's claiming her camera doesn't work, but she's got that tan.
It's better than mine, but it's okay.
Thank you all. You're welcome.
Where did she come?
He's good. He's good.
That's his family. This is his family. Your force is here.
Good to see you, sir.
Come on up here, Chief. We're going to present you with a plaque here. Jim Enrique, Assistant Fire Chief. In recognition of your outstanding 34 years of service with the Los Angeles County Fire Department and your commitment to the residents, community members, colleagues, and all families you help, the city council thanks you for your leadership and dedication to serving Baldwin Park, your hometown. We wish you a prosperous and future and happy retirement. So, on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park, I want to thank you, Chief, for all you've done. I know you've reached out to literally hundreds and thousands of people throughout your career. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, thank you, sir.
Say some words here, Chief, and then we'll get a big picture back here where they were.
Mayor, and all, again, thank you. I'd like to thank the mayor, of course, the city, the city staff for this plaque. I'm very honored. But before I go into say a few words, I'd like to introduce my fire family, who truly, we live together, we fight fire together, and we take care of each other. And that's been our role and that's been my primary responsibility in my 34 years, ensure that we're rendering best care to the citizens that we serve and certainly making sure that we take care of each other's welfare and safety. But I'd like to introduce one of our local captains, Matt Boyer. He's been serving the city of Baldwin Park for 10 years. And I'll have him introduce his team.
Matt, could you introduce the team?
By the way, Chris Peel, firefighter, paramedic. Eric Eastman. Firefighter, paramedic, Matt Linder. Mayor Gus Martinez. Firefighter, paramedic, Chad Flatt.
It's important, so our individuals behind us is the ones that provide the service. I'm in the office doing administrative stuff, but they're our true first responders. They're the ones that respond to your community to all emergency calls. Station 29 is very active. Believe me, they have their shares. Several of these individuals just returned from being three and four days without any sleep up in the Malibu area. We had a very collaborative effort here in the Southern California region with all the local PD. We actually had a tremendous response from a lot of the San Gabriel, a lot of San Gabriel Valley Area D officers I saw up there. So, I'm going to miss it. Yeah, we've been, we're in a career that we've always been, we get the bell, we're all type of individuals. We like that activity, we like the action. We're certainly going to miss it, but it's also time to move on. I'm very fortunate that I had the privilege to end my career serving the community that I grew up. I was born here in West Covina. I grew up here in Baldwin Park. I grew up on Bogart Street across the main. I went to Landis School, I think it's called something else now, but it's all.
Holland.
Or, Holland. But I went to that school as a grade school. I went as a Margaret Heath and Geddes and these various schools around there. I went to Baldwin Park High School. I did my catechism and my first communion at St. John Hospital. When we had Little League ball field, I went to play baseball there and Lucky Baldwin when that was there. So, I am a hometown boy. I rode my bike through here. But one thing I see back then, the town was much more challenged. And what I'm really privileged and really happy to see now, it's a great community to live. It's much safer, much cleaner, the economic development is very evident, and we're all very fortunate to have the leadership team that we have now that continue to render that best care and make decisions in the best interest of the community that we serve. Again, thank you for this plaque and I look forward to some more great things happening here in Baldwin Park.
Absolutely. Thank you. Here we go. We're going to do a separate one for the news. You're going to do?
Sure.
Manny, so you get one separate with the chief? Okay. Thank you very much, Chief Enrique. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know, real quick, let's bring Mr. Long Tang and also Mr. John Bussay. Let's get a photo with you. Come on up here, gentlemen.
I believe John's family's here.
Oh, okay, well, come on up here and you can introduce your family from up here. Come on up here. Yeah, we'll get a picture with the whole family up here. Why, let's do it. Let's bring the family up.
No, actually, that's my brother, my sister-in-law.
Oh, yeah, let's bring everyone up here.
Yeah, the family up here.
Looking forward. Oh, your pleasure, man. It's a pleasure. Pleasure.
Yeah, let's get a photo with everyone. Manny, got it?
My niece, my child, my dad, my mom, my mom's mirror. My dad.
Nice to meet you, Cruz. It's nice to meet you.
Yeah, pleasure. My dad, my son.
Welcome to Baldwin Park. Hello, how are you?
My brother Peter.
Yeah, let's get a photo up here. Let's get a picture. Come on. Manny, we ready? Okay, here we go.
Is someone here, sir?
I don't know.
Who's this? Hi. Manny, hold on. Hold on, I'm sorry. Sorry. It's here.
Oh, yeah, can't have that.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Oh, sorry. Yeah, the chair was in the way.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome on board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Welcome to Baldwin Park. There you go. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, thank you. That's the last presentation, right? All right, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, they approximately three minutes. Good evening.
It's over.
Hey, hey, good evening. Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. Ray Alber.
Yes, Ray.
Albers Heating and Air Conditioning over on Ramona Boulevard, right by the MetroLink tracks.
Excuse me, is the micro, is the mic on?
Can you hear me?
Hello? Oh, there you go. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Ray Alber, Albers Heating and Heating, right on Ramona Boulevard by the MetroLink station and tracks. Recently, there was some repair work done and alterations to the entrance to the shopping area. There was a crosswalk moved, two crosswalks actually, and the crosswalk was moved on Ramona Boulevard, a little bit west of the tracks. And at that entrance, there, or near that entrance, there was a drive-in for vehicles to drive in. Now, it's strictly crosswalk. I have seen, since this has been done, several vehicles drive into the crosswalk area and then bounce off the curb on the other side into the area, the driving area there, right in front of our shop. So, I think some posts or something may need to be put there to keep people from going through there inadvertently. They don't know how to get in to that area on the north side of Ramona Boulevard. You have to enter it off, the only, only way to enter it is off of Bogart. And then exit it on Alderson, which is at the train tracks on the east side. The only trick is they really get confused when they try to exit because somebody put the wrong, put the sign on backwards and it says, "Do not enter."
Okay.
So, people think they can't go out there. So, it's very confusing for people. We've told several workers that have been involved and working out there, I actually approached the guy when he was putting the sign on to say, "Hey, shouldn't that be facing the other way?" And he goes, "Well, it says on the plan that it's supposed to face this way." And he goes, "Oh, yeah, that's right. It should be on the other side, but the plan says this way." So, he put it on the wrong way, anyway. I've called Public Works, left a message last Friday, have yet to receive a return phone call. So, that's why I'm here right now.
All right, okay, sorry about that. Mr. Sam Gitter, could we please get together and replace that, please?
Absolutely. I'll be in contact with you. I got your number and we'll go out there and meet out there and take care of it.
And please let us know, let us know when, once it's been corrected, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. All right, sorry about that.
I have a second.
Yes, sir.
Item. You are having a hearing, a discussion on auxiliary housing, I saw on the agenda.
Right, that is great.
And I would just like to comment that my time is up, apparently.
Oh, it's a public hearing. You can come back, right?
Well, in the public hearing, you could come back and address it.
Yeah, we'll open it up. And it's open for input. Thank you.
Thomas Carey, former resident. Oh, yeah, it's strange, it's because plans say to do it one way and turn it up and put it up the wrong way, even though it says something else. No common sense? I mean, obviously, somebody transposed it or something. I would have went ahead and put it up the right way, but then that's just me, take a chance of getting, well, roasted alive. Anyway, I understand you're making zoning changes where people live in favor of this medical marijuana. I thought, don't other, don't residents have any rights? You figure, oh, we don't have an eminent domain, we'll do an end around and rezone at commercials so that they... But what if they have a mortgage on that house and it says residential? I bet you didn't think of that. You're going to get into some problems. Mr. Tafoya will be busier, I guess. There's one property in particular, I'm not going to tell you where it is, I'll let you guess about that, that I know for a fact is residential. And I'm not going to tell you how I know, and I'm not going to tell you what I know before that either. So, you're going to be in the dark. I got some records I got to find. So, I tend to pack rat paperwork, so it shouldn't be too much of a problem for me. I don't know what it is. You seem to think that you can make changes and do whatever and I know you've got those campaign contributions from the medical marijuana and all this stuff, but what are you going to do? Jeff Sessions is out in Washington. Well, what if you get somebody in there that says, "Oh, this is against the law and they're federal law," and they come to all these places and seize all their assets and they find out where, who and what got money from this federal illegal activity? And maybe they come after some of you for that, too, not just here, but everywhere. And haven't you noticed, too, lately, there's been a lot more accidents on the freeways around? I can't help but wonder if people are driving around high and hitting other cars. Seems to be a sharp rise. I get over in the area early and I listen to the radio and I say, "Man, there's a lot of accidents lately. Are these people driving high on this damn medical marijuana?" So, so-called medical marijuana is recreational now. I mean, don't they understand the danger? People think they can do whatever they want. Of course, in San Bernardino, they have a problem with that. At least the police come in Baldwin Park and Covina and places. We can't get anybody to come to the neighborhood if a guy has a gun. So, be thankful you got the police here that you have and you're not in San Bernardino. Not a good place, not that way, anyway.
All right, thank you very much.
I tried to talk fast.
Thank you. All right, we're along with public communication.
Evening. Just clarification, I also want to talk about the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes, we're going to have, yes, you will. It'll be totally separate. Yes, I'll call you up once it's there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, good evening. Oh, Margarita Vargas.
Good evening, Margarita Vargas. I'm really tired of looking at the streets that the captain, I don't know what his title is, said that he's happy that the city is cleaner than before. But, you know, we still have the problem of people that throw away and they don't call waste management, especially in the apartments. There was a month that I was passing by Ramona Parkway and there's a bunch of sofa, I mean, sofas, furniture, old furniture in the apartments across the street from with, between Stewart and Merced. There's some apartments over there. And, you know, I don't know how can you, because you don't know who left them there because somebody brought people, somebody they moved and just left them. So, I don't know, you can do something with the owners or, but something has to be done, you know, because they can just call the waste management and they come and pick it up. And like I said, there was more than three weeks. They were there, I haven't seen, I didn't pass by, so I don't know if they already gone. But now in Stewart, there's an old bed and mattresses still there in the, in the street. And they look ugly, you know, they make the street look ugly and the other people are next to them. So, I don't know if you can do something with the code enforcement or what can you do? Give them a ticket or some, a fine so they can do something? Because it's really bad to see that when you pass by.
Very true.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we're along with public communication.
Monica Alber, Albers Heating and Conditioning.
So, I don't know, you can do something with the owners or... But something has to be done, you know, because they can just call the Waste Management and they come and pick it up. And like I said, there was more than three weeks. They were there, I haven't seen, I didn't pass by, so I don't know if they already gone. But now in Stewart, there's old bed and mattresses still there in the, in the street. And they look ugly, you know? They make the street look ugly and the other people are next to them. So, I don't know if you can do something with the code enforcement or what can you do? Give them a ticket or some, a fine? So, they can do something? Because it's really bad to see that when you pass by.
Very true.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we're along with Public Communication. Good evening.
Hi. Monica Alber, Albers Air Conditioning. And I just want to add to what Ms. Vargas just said. I had a similar experience with Waste Management because we had a mattress in the back of our shop there in the alley that was put out. And it took me so many tries trying to call Waste Management to get it picked up. Finally, one of the ladies in there was very polite and she told me that the City of Baldwin Park does have a program which is no cost to the homeowner or to us, which was wonderful to find out. I didn't know that. And I wonder how many residents know that. But again, it took me several phone calls, just one to the city, but several to Waste Management. So, I don't know, I agree with Mrs. Vargas, if there's some way that, that could be brought to the attention of the citizens or code enforcement could just pick those up and it would be much nicer. Because I agree with the chief. The city is much nicer than when we grew up here years ago. And it is a much safer, more prosperous city. And I think that a lot of that is due to the citizens and the city council. So, I applaud your efforts, but I think that there's still more work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, okay. We're along with Public Communication. To no further interest, I now declare the Public Communication closed. Just want to address that, that in particular, that we need to definitely, especially out on, on the weekends, you see all these mattresses that accumulate out there and I just don't know why. Maybe to place a sign up that says, "Fine, literally, we'll find you $500, whatever the case may be, legal counsel, you could assist us in that particular area." Because you have people that just don't care. And it happens, especially the weekends. You see them out there, mattresses, same places. And then we need to make sure that we invite Ms. Terry Muse from Waste Management to assist us in newsletter, what have you, send it out. And maybe the first page should be 1-800 number for Waste Management so that people know that there's a solution. Just don't dump that out there. And it's so true, it's sad, but it's reality. All right, Councilmember, yes, Cruz Baca.
I have a comment. And, you know, there's a camera across the street from me and there's a sign that also says that Baldwin Park does not allow dumping or the trash or whatever. They don't pay attention to that. There's some industrial buildings directly behind me. And every Thursday night, it's like a dump site. There's everything from furniture to mattresses to lawn or yard debris, everything, gravel, whatever, pieces of cement. So, I think that we need to go after it a little more aggressively and, because it's not always the owners of the properties. I know the people that own those buildings, they wouldn't do that. So, I think that other people from other, either parts or other cities come in or other parts of the city. And instead of paying the dumping fee or whatever it is, they just say, "Oh, this is a really nice place. We've dumped here before, let's just go ahead and keep dumping." So, I think we need to go after that a little more aggressively. So, I think that, so that that way we can, we can keep our city clean. And I'm, and I know the mattress that Mrs. Vargas is talking about because it was there forever this summer. And there's other places that have mattresses and couches out there in the middle, you know? So, we need to go after it a little more aggressively, thanks.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Cruz Baca. All right, so at this point, we're going to go into the... Excuse me, let me just get my... Where's that? Bear with me. All right, so at this point, we're going into the consent calendar. So, councilmembers wishing to pull any consent calendar?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Six and nine.
Six and nine, all righty. Councilmembers, if not, at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass the consent calendar with the, with the exception of item six and nine. Any objections? See, not so move. All right, at this point, I'd like to, item six, which is a transfer of new public information contract. At this point, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Yes. My comments have nothing in reflection to the work that they do. However, this is the second contract that Mr. Vella is going to be transferring. He started with one company and then the contract was transferred to Veronica Perez and Associates Group. And now it's being transferred to another company. I think that we're setting some type of a precedence here. If we go ahead and agree to this, then anybody can come in and they can transfer their contracts if they go to another company or their company changes names or something. I would, I would really like to consider this contract and not vote for it today because I really do not feel that it is fair for us to accept this transfer the third time around. So, my motion is, I do not want to pass this transfer for the public, new public information contract.
All right, so this is item six and you made a motion. Is there a second? Okay, seeing no second, the motion drops. At this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval of the transfer of the new public information contract. That is my motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second, any objections?
Yes.
One, one objection, Madam City Clerk. At this point, we'll go ahead and take roll call.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Mayor Protapeczeko?
Yes.
Councilmember Baca?
No.
Okay, the motion passes to one. All right, the next one that we're going to is item nine, which is the introduction of ordinance to regulate sidewalk vendings in response to state law, Senate Bill 946. And this is Councilmember Cruz Baca.
This is only for clarification because I've gotten a lot of calls from store owners and residents concerned about the street vendors, even though we've, we have them and have had them for a long time. If it's all right, I would like for council to explain about our ordinance and also some of the changes that I would like to see in the future in order for us to either have them apply for a business license or, which I believe that it's already in the ordinance, but I would like some type of clarification for the record of... Or is it going to be you, Shannon?
Yes, I can give a brief... Sorry, I can give a brief view of the ordinance if you'd like.
Okay, I, I know that it stayed, excuse me, I know that it stayed already and we have to pass this. Except I want clarification as to what the ordinance is so that the residents or the people listening to this will understand how we're going to move forward.
Yes, thank you. And according to the new state law, SB 946, if the city does not adopt their own ordinance by January 1st, then we cannot regulate what the state now defines as sidewalk vending. So, it's very important for us to approve this tonight. It will come back as a second reading so that we can get it in place by January 1st and that will allow the city to regulate that. If there are minor changes that you want to make, we could bring those back after the year, but as I said, it's important that we get this in place now. There are a number of things that the state law does allow the city to regulate items according to health and safety regulations. And so, if you look at page two, there's a list of bullet points on some of the areas where the city will regulate that, such as distances to traffic signals, intersections, crosswalks, schools, when they may vend or not vend in a city park, the hours that they may vend. It restricts vending in residential zones to only roaming sidewalk vendors. It requires that anyone selling food or anything that's regulated by the Health Department hold and display a valid Los Angeles County Health Department permit. It also requires them to obtain a City of Baldwin Park business license, which would also include a background check and a live scan. It requires them to keep their areas clean, make sure that the sidewalks are clear for other pedestrians and including ADA path of travel. It requires them to possess the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration seller's permit. And it would also allow us to regulate them and not allow them to vend within 1,000 feet of a city special event such as a farmer's market or street fair. We have put pretty much everything that we can in according to the state law at this time. We'd like to see how it works. And as I said, if after next year there's some minor adjustments that need to be made, we could bring it back to you at that time.
Councilmember, yes?
I, I make a motion that, what is the number? I make a motion that the street vendor ordinance passes.
All right. Okay, any objections? See, not so move, all right. Thank you very much. Yes, legal counsel, yes, sir.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor. You can amend this later on, but we do have to pass first and second reading exactly the same. That gives us the authority to then come back later and amend it and gives us the ability to change based on the state law. So, while we can't change it right now, we can do that as soon as it's, finishes its second reading and 30 days becomes effective.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we're going over to the successor agency, City Council acting as a successor agency of the Dissolve Community Development Commission. And so, at this point, we have consent calendars, which is SA-1 Successor Agency to Dissolve Community Development Commission of the City of Baldwin Park's warrants and demands. Also, the successor agency to Dissolve Community Development Commission of the City of Baldwin Park's treasure report September 2018. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any objections? See, not so move. All right, we'll now go over to the public hearing, which is a zoning code amendment, number AZC 186, an amendment to the City of Baldwin Park's municipal code, Chapter 153, Sections 153.040, .020, 153.120, .350. Staff recommend that the City Council open the public hearing, receive public testimony and the following discussions by the City Council Ordinance, number 1430, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California, amending the Baldwin Park Municipal Code Title, land usage at Chapter 153, zoning code sections, and also relating to the accessory dwelling units, Zone Code Amendment Case Number. So, just to let everyone know, and we'll bring... Are you gonna do the presentation? You're doing the presentation?
Yes, Mayor. City Planner Ron Garcia has a short presentation. We also have the consultant here, if you have any questions. Just to give everybody a brief history on this, we did a study session for the City Council several months ago, got some preliminary direction, took it through Planning Commission and went through a couple iterations there. There was some public input received and attempt to make some adjustments. Again, this is another situation where this is an ordinance that because of state law, has to be put into effect with the first reading tonight and the second reading prior to January 1st. If there's other adjustments, as the city attorney mentioned, minor adjustments that could be brought back at a later time. But at this point, we do need to move forward.
Okay, that's fine, thank you very much, go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council. So, before you is a zoning code amendment relating to accessory dwelling units as Shannon has briefly described. The code amendment here is to address various state assembly bills passed over the last two years for accessory dwelling units. Again, as Shannon mentioned, the City Council held a study session on ADUs on August 15th. The City Council provided input regarding prohibiting, prohibiting ADUs for lots that front a substandard street, lots located within 300 feet of a school bus stop and lots located on a street with permit parking. Thereafter, on August 22nd, 2018, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider initiating the code amendment for ADUs. The Commission continued the item to address the City Council's concerns provided at the August 15th study session. On September 26th, the Planning Commission held the continued public hearing. The Commission continued the public hearing to address residents' concerns that were brought up regarding restricting ADUs for lots with a minimum area of 8,000 square feet. On October 24th, the Commission held another public hearing in response to the residents' concerns. A draft ordinance was reviewed to allow for a sliding scale of lot size and allowable unit size for new ADUs. And I'll just briefly describe what was included in that ordinance. Here, you have lot sizes. The sliding scale consists of 5,000 square feet or less. For attached, existing single-family dwelling, you have 50% of the living area of existing dwelling up to 600 square feet. The next sliding scale is 5,000 to 8,000 square feet. And there, you have 50% of the living area existing dwelling up to 1,000 square feet for attached. And lastly, you have 8,000, any lots that are 8,000 above, you can do 50% of the living area existing dwelling up to 1,200. Now, for maximum allowable ADU for detached, again, you have 600 square feet for 5,000, for lots 5,000 or less. And then for 5,000, for lots between 5 and 8,000, you have 1,000 square feet. And then 8,000 and over, you have a maximum of 1,200 square feet. So, at the hearing, additional comments were received from the public regarding the requirement that the owner of the property on which an ADU is created also occupy either the ADU or the primary residence. The concern was expressed that in the case of a property held in a trust, property owners are listed either as the settler, trustee and or co-trustee and title would no longer be held in the same single person. Per the Planning Commission's direction, staff proposes that the following language include in the ordinance, which is included in the ordinance that's been provided to you. And that language reads, "The owner of the property on which an accessory dwelling unit is constructed shall reside within the primary or accessory dwelling unit where a property is held in a trust. Occupancy by either the settler, trustee or co-trustee or any beneficiary of the trust shall be considered owner occupancy." So, in sum, the code amendment is exempt from CEQA per Section 15601b3. Staff recommends that the City Council introduce the ordinance regulating accessory dwelling units. That concludes my staff's presentation. Again, the consultant that has assisted putting together the ordinance is present for any further questions.
Let me ask a question, so if someone wants to convert a particular room, so does that exclude the actual garages?
Uh, no.
Can someone talk?
It will exclude, oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
If I understand the question, if you want to convert a space within an existing structure?
Yes.
Does it exclude the garage?
It does, it does not, you said, is that what you...
If it's attached?
Yes.
Excuse me, you cannot convert an attached garage.
Detached, you could?
You can.
Okay, interesting. And the actual square footage again was what?
If it's within, if it's, if it's within the existing walls of a living area of an existing unit, it's 50%
Oh, 50%.
of the habitable area up to 600 square feet. If it's a, if it's a conversion, let me see here, sorry. If it's an attached, if it's new construction and it's attached, it's 50% of the existing square footage of the existing single-family up to the limits that you see there per sliding scale of lot.
Okay, all right. And just for the audience purposes, I mean, this is something that's been mandated by the state to all 58 counties in the State of California. So, just want to let everyone know.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
I really do believe that I have, again, I've gotten a lot of questions and a lot of concerns. People are ready to start converting their garages or part of, or a bedroom. Forget about part of, half 50% of the house, a bedroom. I think that we need to have workshops to do outreach. The community, I believe, is, I'm confused. So, I, and, and I was there when the presentations were made. So, I think that we need to have outreach workshops so that the community understands that they're not ready to just start renting out a room and that there are certain ordinances. And we, we have to really strictly follow those ordinances so that whoever is living in those dwellings can be safe. That is my concern. How safe are the residents? It's a, it's a wonderful opportunity to bring in affordable housing and that's the whole purpose of this, the lack of affordable housing or housing period in the State of California. But I also think that we need to be very careful of our residents from living in a situation where there's, the electrical is bad or they just jimmy-rigged it from the house or whatever they call it and pretty soon you hear that there's a fire. That would make me feel very bad if I knew that I was part of this and that happened to, to a family or to whomever it is. So, I think that we have to have very strict regulations and make sure that this isn't just where someone's gonna throw a mattress in a garage and consider this an ADU. just where someone's going to throw a mattress in a garage and consider this an ADU. And also the workshops, which is, you know, and I'm repeating myself, the workshops, of course, are extremely important so that the people that are planning to do this and have space to do this, whether it's a garage or part of their home or whatever, know exactly what the regulations and the ordinance is going to entail, because that's extremely important to follow. So, thank you.
And I think a concern for mine, this past concert, you had, I don't know who, how they, well, of course propaganda. There were, a group was already handing out little pamphlets saying the city's already okay to ordinance. Of course, these thugs that come in here, and of course Latino community, they're going to fall for it. There's a good portion of people were already telling me, oh, good, this is great. So then they get stuck financed. As a matter of fact, one of them got stuck financed with $30,000 on a room that was made, by the way. And it's definitely not up to code standards, but just an FYI.
Mayor, just to add to that, there are people either making phone calls or going toward the door, handing out pamphlets, saying that they're going to do this ADU conversion for you and that the city allows it and they're going to do the whole work. So I think you have to be very cautious. I know somebody called me and told me about if I wanted to make more money by renting more rooms in my house, and they explained this law, which in Baldwin Park, it wasn't true. But my question also is, if you have a home and has a detached garage and you convert that garage into an ADU, do you still have to allow for parking for the cars? Because now you've got the family in the home that has parking, and then you have people in the new converted garage. Where's everybody going to park their car, or how do you accommodate for that?
The state legislation regarding detached garages is that, because a detached garage is an accessory structure, the legislation says that if you convert a garage or an accessory structure, you do not, you're not required to provide replacement parking and you're not required to provide parking for that unit. And unfortunately, that's coming from the state. It was not a suggestion on staff's part or the consultant's part.
So how does staff recommend that if we have a street that's a cul-de-sac and there's detached garage and there's 13 houses, and now you've converted all these garage? I mean, obviously, people are going to begin to park, they can't park on that cul-de-sac, and will start to park outside around there. Now, I know that because where I live, there was, there was allowed a conversion of a, it was an office space to turn into apartments, and then those individuals didn't have enough parking space, so they ended up parking down our street and other streets. And, you know, it just creates an over, you know, parking situation.
I think, can I, I think that we have to, as the city, I don't think that with the regulations with the ADU, because there is no parking regulations, and as it is, you see our streets in Baldwin Park. I mean, you can't go, my street that used to be a very quiet street years ago, one car can go at a time because there's so many cars parked. Even with the red curb that we have now, they're still lined up all the way around Alderson to the VFW near my house. So I think that the city will have to think about doing some type of an ordinance, and then what do you do? If there's no overnight parking, then where do they park? You know, I mean, that's a, that's a very serious problem here in Baldwin Park without the ADUs is the parking situation.
Yeah, and unfortunately, as was stated, we're stuck with these requirements from the state. If we do run into neighborhoods where this type of thing is happening, we can look at permit parking or other parking restrictions
Absolutely.
On the street with a case-by-case basis.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may make, it should be very clear that there's certain things that we can do with this ordinance, which is why we're doing this. One of the things we cannot do is require additional parking for an accessory unit. So that's just not something we can change, even if we wanted to.
It's amazing, and if you ask me, I think the state ought to worry about its own personation and not govern, or attempt to bring this down on cities. It's unfortunate, but that's where we're at.
I make a motion to pass zoning code amendment. Is the public communication closed?
No.
Oh.
That's fine. So at this point, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and open it, open up the public hearing, and this is for anyone that's opposing the proposal. So if you're opposing, you come up at this point, then I'll open up for those that are in favor. So this is opposing. Good evening, sir.
I'm opposing one section, letter C, that has to do the premise occupancy requirement. I was at the planning meeting, commissioner meeting, and the direction was to pass this because of your deadlines I'm aware of before January, and I happen to agree with a great majority of what we have submitted that's above the requirements of the state. However, the direction given to the attorney was to have a hardship clause because we cannot build. The way this is written, we cannot build. We have a family member that lives in the house with his family, taking care of our elderly in the grandparents' house. Because of our financial situations, we pulled our money together and a different sibling owns the property and the loan. The way this is written, we cannot build. We can do everything else. So I'm requesting that if you can't make changes based on what the CEO stated, then we have to wait two more months to see if we can get that changed. I have a recommendation. Hardship clause allows for the changes to the occupancy requirement with circumstances after the balance of obligations resulting in an unequal burden on one of the parties. With that clause in there, then we can make presentations to the Planning Commission justifying what we can do to meet that hardship. I'm sorry, Glenn Garcia, I'm representing owners there on Main Street, and other people have just come to my attention also.
Are you a legal counsel? Are you an attorney?
No.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Thank you, though, for that compliment.
No, just to let you know that we are able to make changes as well. For, it's more of us making certain that we pass this before the end of the year because we're mandated by the state of California, and we don't want them to
I agree.
Place the one that they're proposing.
I agree, but what now, we have to wait.
No, we can make the change, and my legal counsel, we could
You can make the change from the dais, Mayor, but whatever changes you make and whatever you pass today has to be passed the exact same way the second time. But you can make any changes you wish today. In addition, anyone with that potential issue, of course, could put the property in a trust, and then that would allow them to be able to do whatever they want to do. So there's a couple different ways.
Let me just ask. So say we pass it as is and decide we want to make the changes, say, in January. Can we do that?
Yes, Mayor, you may.
Okay, all righty. This way, this way we could come back, do a study session, and really go through it thoroughly, of course, considering what's being mentioned here as well.
Government Code 6585-2-2 does not require residency occupancy requirements. That's what we're talking about with the state. So that's why we're supporting, saying, yes, we don't want the whole city start exploding with growth from private people building homes and renting it out, but the conflict exists. A person can go ahead and build a granny flat on their property and rent it out to somebody else, but I cannot build for my family.
Got it.
So we're recommending the change now. There's a clause, this is a legal definition, even though I'm not an attorney, to put that clause in there. So I appreciate you folks listening and trying to help us out, and we give it a solution to you. I want to be able to work with these guys.
Okay. So you know what? Do you have a copy? We could submit it over to the city, our city treasurer here.
Copy what section?
Of what you just read off?
I'll rewrite it. It's my chicken scratches.
Very good, that's fine. All right, this point, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
No, I just wanted to see what the gentleman had in writing, but
Right.
I think for the time being, I think we just, we need to pass the ordinance.
Exactly.
I mean, I understand his dilemma, but we need to go forward.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
You can, you know, our city attorney made a suggestion, maybe he can talk to you and explain it a little further. But we will consider your suggestions at the next, once this ordinance is passed, and we'll revise it again.
All righty.
Yes, so, but I also, I also have to say that I see Planning Commissioner Christopher Sines here. So I think that the planning commissioners should also be held accountable for looking at this on a, on a case-by-case basis, because not everyone is going to be able to follow the qualifications. We've had problems in the past where a landlord does not take care of the property, and we've had a heck of a time trying to either get them to clean it, or whatever it is, or to bring it up to code. So I think that the planning commissioner should also look at the ordinance and make sure that if it's a case-by-case, they take a good look at the property and work with our department, our planning, and our engineers to make sure that this is up to code. Hello?
That's fine. I agree. I agree to what you're saying, and it's important because we do have that issue here, where people just simply just take advantage, and we don't want it to get out of control.
Yes.
So at this point, at this point, what we're going to do is we're, I'm going to go ahead and move for motion to pass. Sorry about that. Okay, we've got to bring those that are in favor. So at this point?
These were against.
So that, that, we're ready. We've got to pass it on.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
We're not done with opposed yet.
I'm opposed to it.
No, no, he's opposed, not in favor.
He wants to
Oh, but I, yeah, but I mean, we haven't finished with the opposed.
I didn't mean to, you know, anyway. Yeah, you already have trouble with parking here and other places
That's true.
Converting garages to residences. Covina over here, they have permit parking, citywide, at least in the city part of it. The cars have to be licensed, they have to be insured, otherwise they're towed away. That keeps the junk off the street and keeps the street from looking all cluttered. You see a difference in things when you go into cities where it's not full of cars. It looks a hell of a lot better than a street jam full of cars leaking who knows what. So, and I want to footnote, state law, you know, they're always stepping on everybody's toes up there. There is an ordinance, is for littering is a $1,000 fine. I just thought I'd mention that. That's a little side note, that they already have that. But as for, I don't know, this diagram we had up there, yeah, it's confusing to me, too. I don't, I don't know, I don't know enough about it, because I wasn't at the hearing, so I don't know. But it just seems, I don't know, it seems like there's something wrong with it, the way it's written, just by, and also by what he said, that a stranger can rent a place, but the family can't do what they want with their own property. Seems like there's something wrong with that. And if you can't build out, maybe build upward, I don't know what they allow for two-story, but I've seen some lots around the city where they jammed a big house on a little bitty lot, and the backyard is no bigger than a bowling alley lane. I mean, that's, this doesn't, all these houses jammed together. I don't mind neighbors, but I don't want them that close. And the only other way to escape all the parking problems is to move into a mobile home park where you don't have this problem. They have rules there. There's no street parking, there's no overabundance of people, or animals. So, that's all, I just, I just think that you need to go back and look at this and make sure what you're getting yourselves into. I know you can make changes in January, so, like I say, pass it as is and fix it in January to beat the state and those damn Democrats up there that seem to be ruining everything in the state anyway. I tried to get them out, but, you know. Okay, I better.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, at this point, anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Opposed.
Opposed, excuse me. No, that was
No, in favor.
In favor, all right. If not, at this point, I will now declare the public hearing closed.
All in favor.
Oh, yeah, favor, come on up. Sorry about that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Again, Ray Albert. I have a property behind my business property, residential lot, and it is, has a small house on it, and according to the way the rules are written there, the house is about a 700 square foot house, and it's close to a 7,000 square foot lot. But I could build a 300 square foot additional unit there. It's pretty darn small. I think that the square footage requirements should be looked at carefully. If you're going to build something, you might as well build it worthwhile and something that somebody would, could actually live in. Also, I would like to reiterate what Cruz said, that I think these permits should be looked at individually and not be bound in, to these rules to where, so the planning department can actually have some discretion as to what makes sense
Mm-hmm.
And what would physically work and actually accomplish the goal of what this is set out to do, rather than have these restrictive things set on it. And also, hopefully, there won't be excessive permit fees and issuance fees imposed in order to get these things done, or variances in order to accomplish that. It should be able to be done by a simple, by the Planning Commission, or the planner, or somebody without having to spend thousands of dollars to run it through a process, and a variance process and all of that. So I agree with it, but I think that it is, I think it's a step in the right direction, but it needs to be made a process that is not burdensome, and something that makes common sense and actually achieves what the overall goal is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just a moment. One thing that we have to be concerned about, and I know Cruz brought this up, but I know under state law, if the regulation that we're passing is discretionary, in other words, if we can decide this person gets it, but that person doesn't, I believe that would violate state law. We have to have procedures and standards, so we can't decide one person gets it, but another one doesn't. And I don't know that that's what you mean, and I know that's not what Cruz means, but there are some limitations as to the discretion we can write into the ordinance.
Yes, I think that that would be a good idea. I think that, I think that that would be a good idea for us to be able, because it's going to happen anyway. The state already is requiring all the cities. Now, do we want some leeway where we control what happens in our city? Absolutely, and this is a time to do it. Because I think that eventually what we're going to find, like I said, that's why I suggested the workshops, is because I think that eventually people are going to think that they could just, like I said, throw a mattress in their garage and expect that that's okay. And I don't want that to happen. I don't want to see that happen in our city, and especially with slum landlords. So I think we need to regulate it. I think it'll start, like I said, with the Planning Commission, working with our planning department and engineers to make sure, not in a case-by-case, like it sounds, but just making sure that we follow the regulations with each one that comes to apply for that, and make sure that they follow all the regulations.
And try and create as much flexibility as we can.
Yes.
Sounds good. All right, so, go ahead. Commissioner.
Hi, Commissioner Christopher Sines, resident of Baldwin Park. So first of all, I wanted to thank you guys for taking up this ordinance. My colleagues on the Planning Commission, we work really hard with staff and the community in trying to craft an ordinance, still in the state's parameters, that kind of cater to the needs of the community, and I think we did an absolutely great job at doing so. Certainly, there's things that can be fixed, and that's something for the future, but as it stands, I think it's a great, it's greatly written. I think I'm here kind of just expressing what Mr. Garcia mentioned. The Planning Commission unanimously directed staff to look at, into something we kind of coined, a hardship waiver. The intention of the ordinance is to bypass the bureaucracy and allow homeowners to build accessory dwelling units without having to go to the Planning Commission. But in the event that they didn't meet a certain criteria, they could apply for a hardship waiver, and that application would either be processed administratively or brought to the Planning Commission for approval. So I hope that you guys can consider that in your further deliberations. Secondly, something that I think we spoke on the Planning Commission very regularly and something that I think every single member of the Planning Commission is aware and kind of concerned about is the potential for parking. We cannot require parking. I think the entire city is within a quarter mile of mass transit, which, I mean, we can't, we can't require homes to build additional parking if they're within one quarter mile of mass transit, which our entire city is pretty much within one quarter mile. But we really need to look into maybe moving towards a parking permit ordinance, at least. I know that we have pilot programs throughout the city that have worked phenomenally, so if we can start transitioning citywide, I actually live on a street that there are only homes on one side of the street, yet I still have a hard time finding parking on my, in front of my home. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak for the past few moments, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I need an explanation about the hardship waiver, because that concerns me. If it means that he doesn't have to go through planning, and someone says, I have a hardship, I need that explained as to what a hardship would, what is, what is the definition of a hardship waiver?
So I think, and I try to address this as best as I can, I think that the, I think the hardship, and it's probably coined incorrectly, it was more if you don't fall in line with what our standards are, you can apply for an appeal. So maybe hardship waiver isn't necessarily the word you should use.
Yeah, an appeal, I understand that, but a hardship waiver?
Right. So that was just the word that was thrown around, or the term thrown around, but I think it'd be more of an appeal.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing is, and because I've worked very closely with some of the organizations that are trying to bring in affordable housing, supportive housing, transitional housing, whatever housing it is, and the, according to the surveys, 73% of the people that live in these particular dwellings work manually. So that means getting on public transit with all your construction gear is a little difficult. And so most of them either ride with someone, rideshare, you know, even though they own their own vehicle, like some of my neighbors. But I also think that a lot of them own their own little truck or some type of vehicle to get them to and from their job sites. So those were the statistics that were given to me at a meeting not too long ago. They are working families that work manually out in construction or some form of construction.
Right, and I do think that it's probably unrealistic to believe that the majority of the people that are going to occupy these ADUs are going to use mass transit, but that's the law and that's what we have to move for. I know that I, my time is probably up, but if we can also look at incentives for using these ADUs with our housing authority to provide them to our low-income residents, whether it's, I guess my time's up, but thank you.
Oh, no, that's fine. Thank you very much for the explanation.
So at this point, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? If not, I will now declare the public communication, public hearing closed.
So now I make a motion.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, that's fine, go ahead, go ahead.
So now I make a motion that zoning code amendment, AZC 186, an amendment to the city of Baldwin Park City of Balden Park Municipal Code, Chapter 153, Sections 153.040, .020, et cetera, et cetera, relating to accessory dwelling units. I make a motion that we pass.
All right, second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right, and then we'll address that at the, sometime in the near future as well. All right, so we'll go over to item number 11. Item number 11, it says, "Approval of the Resolution Number 2018-301, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Balden Park approving the form and authorizing distribution of the preliminary official statement and approving the form authorizing the execution of bond purchase agreement, all in connection with the offering and sales taxable pension obligation bonds and authorizing certain actions with respect thereto." So at this point?
Yeah, as, this is the next step in the paying off of the unfunded obligation, and staff is here if you have any questions.
Just want to like to go ahead and move for approval. Resolution Number 2018-301 approving the form.
Excuse me?
Did you have a question?
Yes, could Rose please explain, I think it's Rose, right? That would explain this to us?
Okay.
What the savings in, and is the, is, does this include the OPEB, or is it just for the unfunded liability?
This one only included the unfunded liability for the pension, not the OPEB.
Yes.
The saving will be estimated about 19 million.
Wow.
And also, the proceed will be directly sending to CalPERS to pay down the unfunded liability. The proceed would not come to the city, just for City Council's information and for the public.
Now, let me ask you, if we're paying off, if we're paying off the unfunded liability, of course, right, the pension?
Yes.
Will we be caught up, or are we going to get behind again in the near future?
We will be much better off, we, we will be paying off as of now the estimated unfunded liability with CalPERS. Of course, we will continue to incur a small amount of unfunded liability in the future.
Do you know how much that would be?
I can have Suzanne Harrow come up there and give a little, a little bit more detailed information.
Could you, could you, is she here?
And I can add to, while she's coming up, part of that is an estimate, because it also depends how the PERS investments do over the next few years, so we can only, you know, make estimates on that. And then also, in, in your request to the OPEB, Rose will be coming back with what's called a 115 trust proposal for the city council to try to look up prepaying the retiree medical unfunded liability. Suzanne?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So as Rose mentioned, this, this prepayment will fund all of your liabilities through June 30 of 2017. There will be another liability that is generated when PERS changes the discount rate from the current rate of seven and a quarter down to 7%, and you won't be informed of what that number is until next August. And so you don't even have an opportunity to pay that off at this moment in time. We think that's probably based on the, the $4 million change, the last time PERS changed the rate from seven and three-quarter to seven and a quarter, your liability's probably going to go up at least $4 million, based on that. Now, PERS also, as, as the city manager said, it also depends on their investment returns. So last year, they, they earned 11.2%, so that provided an offset of $4 million against the original $4 million that they added. This year, the return was about 8.6%, so some of that increase is going to be offset by a higher-than-7% investment return. So I would say probably a net $3 to $4 million will be added next July or August when you get the new report.
Do you know?
Not funded as part of this transaction.
Do you know if there'll be any changes with this new administration that's coming in, or with the state, is what I'm saying? Will there be any chances that some of this would, would be lower than what you're anticipating?
Not for the, not for the near term, because they've already set those parameters in place for the next, like, say, two to three years. They are going to reduce the discount rate to 7%. The PERS board has already voted on that, and they're going to implement that. And they are changing, you know, how many years they amortize these obligation, these layers that they create every year. They've already, PERS board has already voted on that. So it's really a question about what happens in the future. Do they change the discount rate from 7% to something lower? And that's just, you know, remains to be seen. No one thinks that's going to happen anytime soon, but you, it's not really possible to guarantee.
Yeah, don't, that, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Rose.
You're very welcome.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so at this point, I'd like to approve Resolution Number 2018-0301, approving the form and authorizing distribution of the preliminary official statement and approving the form and authorizing the execution of the bond purchase agreement, all in connection with the offering and sale of taxable pension obligation bonds in the amount of not to exceed 55 million, and authorize certain actions and respect thereto. Second, any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close the adjournment of the city council.
May I just have a?
Oh, go ahead.
A comment to make. In being that we were looking at the, the public hearing on the various access dwelling units, I would like to see if our housing department, maybe the second meeting of January, would be able to give us an update on where our housing department is, and what kind of programs we have available to our residents, and also what other programs that we could possibly either create through the city itself, through possibly doing bonds for housing, or, or any kind of funding that we might have. I think it's time to relook, take a second look at our housing program, and to try to bring it up to code and make it more available to the different residents that we have in our community. So we could have that workshop sometime in the second meeting of January, because of the holidays and all that, I think would be appropriate to have at the beginning of the year.
I'd like to, I'd like to add something before we close to that, and I, I believe that it's up to code, I really do, because of course, they follow a lot of regulations through HUD and everything. However, this is my question, do we have enough staff to be able to handle this? We're bringing in Measure H monies, that I know that this is, has nothing to do with ADU, what we are discussing now, but it, it will in the near future. We've got the Measure H monies that's coming in, and that's also going to impact our housing department, and as well as other departments, code enforcement, planning, and so forth, our police department. Do we have enough staff to be able to handle all the new regulations, or all the new laws that are coming in, which would include the ADU? So that, that would be a really big question to ask after the first of the year. Do we have enough staff to handle this extra load that they'll be carrying?
Well, let's do a presentation. I want to know about all the different types of programs we have, and with this new funding, the propositions that have passed, particularly one and two, I want to see, how can we take advantage of what's available, and also what else can the city do to find more funding to be able to support that? Do we have enough staff? I mean, we, you know, I think so, but we could have an assessment done by the city manager to determine that. But more importantly, is what programs are out there that we have available for the community, especially in Balden Park? A lot of times, these programs that are out there tend to be sort of countywide, and I want programs that are focused on what's available to the residents of the city of Balden Park.
Well, you know, I work closely right now with a lot of our different staff members, from the police department, to Manny Carrillo and Eurico from Parks and Rec, and Armando Nava, Sam Gutierrez, of course, that handles our public works. There are a lot of grants coming in that they're working on right now, as far as, like you're saying, grants that will bring in probably eventually some type of supportive housing, grants that will bring us and will help and assist with some of the people that may need vouchers, or something to help them make it through a couple of months of paying the rent. There are, I could go on and on. The grants are there, and we're applying for them. It's just following through, and my concern is, do we have enough staff to be able to bring in all the programs that are available to us right now?
Mayor, I think there are two different issues. We're talking about staffing, and we're talking about programs. I would say, staff, I want to bring everything up that's available, different types of programs, the new proposition, you know, how does it all fit together with what we've been using and all the new programs that are stepping forward? But I think staffing is something that we could look at in the midterm budget, to see what we could afford for staffing. I mean, there's always a need for more staffing, but at the same time, we have to balance with what could we afford with staffing, or if these new programs have, you know, an administrative fee that you could have more staff, I, I think we look at it. But I think, I think we're looking at two different components. One, we can look at later as far as what staffing we need, and the second, one important one, is what programs are available, especially what new programs are coming up, and how do we take advantage and situate ourselves in a way that we're taking advantage of all these new programs?
Well, here we go again. With some of these programs, there is funding to bring in staff for 18 months. So that's something that I really suggest that either you meet with staff, or that there be some type of a workshop in the near future, so that everybody can understand everything that's going to be put in motion as of January 1. So there is funding to bring in staff, that pays for 18 months of staffing, to be able to fill some of the positions that will need to be filled with some of the new propositions that just passed.
Then we'll have staff present all that information, and that's what I'm asking.
Yes, and that's fine, and that's what I said.
As a city, as council members, and the community, it's time to bring this information forward, and let's discuss it, since the state has decided to create all these new programs, and the voters have decided, let's, you know, sit down as a, as a community, as leaders of the city council, and talk about what's the best way now to utilize these resources that are now available to us. That's what I'm saying.
And I, and that's, that's a great idea.
And I just want to end by saying, and more so Balden Park, I mean, we're not an affluent community compared to the neighbors, right, that are probably much more prepared, and of course, you know, a good portion of ours, you know, we're, we're a lot of hard-working residents of Balden Park, so it's going to definitely be a challenge, no doubt.
Well, the good thing is that there's incredible staff that's working on this. And like I said, I've attended and I belong to several committees, and ad hoc committees, so I work and have worked very closely for the last two and a half years. So our staff is incredible. In fact, we're like the role model of, of all the consultants that have put not only Measure H into place, but a lot of the consultants that work with the county in putting this. So, because we have staff, sometimes we've got eight staff members, including myself, that attend these meetings, from, from our officers that handle, the two officers, Officer Gale and Finley, that handle the homeless, to the Parks and Rec, Manny Carrillo, Eurico, and Armando Nava, sometimes. We've got housing people that are showing, I'm telling you, there are eight of our staff members that show up to these meetings. So we are really, we are the role model of what's going to be going on when Measure H and all these other propositions go into gear. So I'm really proud and very happy of our staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Councilmember Cruzbaca. All right, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion for adjournment of the city council. That's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, so move. At this point, before I go on to the housing and the finance authority, just want to make sure that I read off what we need to read per the state of California. All right, one moment, here we go. All right, this is to announce a request by, by the government code, Section 54952.3. Members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and the Finance Authority, which are concurring, convening with the city council this, this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30, $30 for attending the housing authority meeting, and $50 for attending the finance authority. All right, so at this point, I'd like to open up the housing authority, like to make a motion for consent counts, items one and two. That's my motion.
Second.
Second. Any objections? Seeing none. This point, I'd like to move for adjournment of the housing authority. That's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, so move. At this point, I'd like to open up the finance authority, and I will move for the treasurer report, which is only item one. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cruzbaca. All right, at this point, I'd like to move for adjournment of the, of the housing authority, finance authority. That's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, so move. At this point, good evening, viva Balden Park.
Good evening.
Gene, bring Jim. Hey, Jim, do you have a minute?